Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I'm Calder Lynch. I'm the Director of the Division of Medicaid and Long-Term Care. And we're here to talk about some of the changes that are happening with the Medicaid program here in Nebraska over the next few months. So we've got a PowerPoint presentation that we'll be working through, and then certainly we'll have plenty of time at the end of the presentation for any questions that you may have. This is about the 14th time in the past eight days that we've done the PowerPoint here. So there's some folks from our team here that have probably heard me say this many times, but the questions are always a little different, so it's great. Great to hear from you. And just so everyone's aware, we are filming tonight's Town Hall meeting to be able to put up on our Internet for all those who maybe couldn't travel to one of the sites that we visited over the state. So that will be an additional resource for folks to be able to access some of the information that we're here to talk about tonight. I'm also joined here today by several members of the Medicaid leadership team. We have Deputy Director of Delivery Systems Heather Luschinski, our Medicaid Medical Director, Dr. Lisa White, and Deputy Director of Policy and Communications Rocky Thompson, as well as Communications Manager Carmen Bockel. So we've got a number of our team here represented, so hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have. So let's go ahead and get started. As I said, we have been across the state working to discuss some of the changes that are happening in the Medicaid program with a pretty diverse group of folks. So I always like to start at the very beginning, so we're all talking the same language. And we're here to talk about the Medicaid program. And Medicaid is a health insurance program that provides coverage for low-income individuals. It's been around for about 50 years. It's jointly administered and financed by the state and federal governments, although some of the rules around eligibility and how healthcare is delivered and how the program operates varies from state to state. So things are a little bit different in each state. And when we talk about the Medicaid program, we are also talking about the Children's Health Insurance Program, or CHIP, which we administer jointly with Medicaid here in Nebraska. Currently in Nebraska, we have about 230,000 Nebraskans who are enrolled in Nebraska Medicaid. That represents about 12% of our state's population. And the program itself spends about $2 billion annually, the vast majority of which is dollars that are being used to reimburse for healthcare services for our eligible members. The actual enrollment of Nebraska Medicaid is predominantly made up of children from birth through age 18, and low-income parents and caretakers of many of those children. They make up the bulk of our enrollees, but actually the bulk of our expenditures are accounted for in a smaller share of our membership, which includes our individuals who are blind and have disabilities, and our low-income elderly individuals. So smaller share of members, larger share of costs, sort of that 80/20 rule at work in the Medicaid program, which is common among states. So we're here today to talk about some of the changes that are happening in the Medicaid delivery system. And when I say "delivery system," I mean the way in which we're reimbursing and managing and paying for care for our members. And in Nebraska, we use a system of predominantly managed care to deliver health services for our members. And when we talk about managed care, what we mean is a system in which the state, or in this case, the Department of Health and Human Services, which Medicaid sits in, contracts with a health plan. And when we say "health plan," we also can say managed care organization, health insurance company. We use these terms somewhat interchangeably. For the purposes of our presentation today, I'll use "health plan." So the state contracts with a health plan to administer the eligible benefits and services for our members, and doing so contracts with healthcare providers like doctors and hospitals, therapists, and DME suppliers to provide services for our members, and reimburses those providers for that care, and has a network in place to be able to deliver that care to our members. But something that's important is that although we're contracting with a health plan to administer the benefits of Medicaid, the state retains its responsibility of processing Medicaid applications and determining when an individual is or isn't Medicaid under the state's eligibility criteria. And here in Nebraska, we do that through the Access Nebraska system to be able to process Medicaid applications and determine eligibility. And nothing about that process is changing as part of the changes with managed care. So that continues to be the same in terms of eligibility. So as I mentioned, we've had a system of managed care in Nebraska for some time, and it's certainly evolved over the last 20 years when we first had our first contract in the Omaha area with a health plan. And today, we have three contracts with regional health plans to administer the physical health or medical benefits for about 82% of our enrollees, primarily our families, children, and parents. And then we have a separate managed care entity that operates statewide to administer behavioral health or mental health and addictive disorder services for nearly all of our enrollees. And then we have some services and programs that are administered directly by the state, including our pharmacy benefit, where the state pays those claims directly using a pharmacy benefit manager that we contract with to actually provide the software to be able to process those claims at the pharmacy level. So depending upon who you are, and as a Medicaid member in Nebraska, and what services you're receiving, you're potentially, as a member, having to navigate three different delivery systems to receive the care in which you're eligible for, which can be pretty So to help visualize what that system looks like, as I mentioned, we have the majority of our membership, about 82%, who are required to enroll in a physical health -- excuse me -- or medical health plan. And that would include our children, our parents, for the most part. And today, they're choosing between one of two regional health plans, and their choice depends upon which part of the state they live in. So currently, we have Aetna Better Health that provides services statewide. We have United Healthcare that's administering services in the urban markets in eastern Nebraska, like here in Lincoln in Omaha. And then we have Arbor Health Plan, who operates in greater Nebraska. So as a Medicaid member here in Lincoln, you're enrolled, and you're required to enroll in a health plan, you would be choosing between Aetna and Arbor -- I'm sorry, Aetna and United today for your medical benefits. If you're out in greater Nebraska, if you're out in Scotts Bluff, for example, you'd be choosing between Aetna and Arbor Health Plan. And then, as I mentioned, we have a statewide behavioral health health plan, which is operated by Magellan, is our contractor. And Magellan administers the behavioral health benefit for nearly all of our members. So almost everyone in Medicaid, they may not realize it, is enrolled in a health plan in that they're enrolled in the Magellan health plan for their behavioral health benefits. And then we have a number of services that the state continues to administer directly and reimburse providers directly through our state claim system. And that includes, as I mentioned, the pharmacy or prescription drug services, non-emergency transportation, those that help getting to and from doctor's appointments for members, as well as all of our long-term supports and services, or long-term care services, which are nursing home care, help in the community, in your home, assisted living, those types of services. And I'll talk more about those as we move into the presentation. And then we have groups of eligible individuals that, based upon how they qualified for Medicaid, are actually completely excluded from this medical or physical health managed care system and are not choosing a health plan today, and are having those services administered directly by the state in that fee-for-service system. And that would include anyone that's eligible for both Medicaid and Medicare. We call them dual eligibles, as well as anyone who's receiving those long-term care services, such as the services in our home and community-based waiver programs, living in a nursing facility, a nursing home, an intermediate care facility, those institutional settings, or enrolled in the PACE program, which is kind of a program for elderly individuals in the community. So those folks are completely excluded from the physical health managed care, and therefore are not choosing a health plan today, although some of this is changing under what we're here today to talk about. So a quick comparison, just to make sure we're all using the same language. When we talk about the difference between fee-for-service and managed care, what we're really talking about is how the services get paid for from the state's perspective. So in a fee-for-service system, from the state's perspective, the claim is being paid after the service is delivered, and the provider is sending that claim to the state to process and pay based upon our coverage criteria and eligibility criteria. And therefore, the state is sort of at risk for any increases in utilization or cost that may occur, and it's a little difficult for us to plan our budget, and we don't have a lot of budget predictability depending upon we get a bad flu season, we get a lot of hospitalizations, those expenditures go up. In a managed care system, the state is actually making an upfront payment to the health plan every month based on an actuarially calculated rate, meaning we're calculating a rate based on the expected cost of services. And we're paying that plan upfront every month, and that plan is taking on the responsibility of administering the benefits and paying claims to providers. And therefore, the state has more budget predictability, and some of that risk is assumed by the health plan. So that's really the difference when we talk about fee-for-service versus managed care. Now, in many cases, the managed care plans, the health plans, may be reimbursing providers on a fee-for-service basis depending upon how their contracts are structured, but from the state's perspective, we've made that payment upfront. What we're here tonight to talk about are the changes that are happening in our managed care system in Nebraska. And starting January 1st, 2017, managed care in Medicaid will be known as Heritage Health. And Heritage Health is the brand or the name of the managed care program that we're using to better be able to engage with our members and our stakeholders about these changes and about the decisions they'll have to make as a member in terms of enrolling in a plan. And within Heritage Health, there are three health plans that the state has partnered or contracted with to administer the services for our members. And they include Nebraska Total Care, United Healthcare Community Plan, and WellCare of Nebraska. The United name will be familiar to many of us because they're administering services here in Lincoln and Omaha for the medical health plan benefits today, but Nebraska Total Care and WellCare are both new to our state. So one of the big changes that's happening as part of Heritage Health is that all three of these plans will operate statewide. They'll have statewide provider networks, and they'll serve members that live across the state. So no matter where you live in Nebraska under Heritage Health, you'll have the opportunity to choose between all three of these plans to be your health plan. The other big change that's happening as part of Heritage Health is that these health plans will be responsible for a more complete or broader set of healthcare services. So in addition to the medical or physical health benefits that our current health plans are responsible for, the Heritage Health plans are also taking on responsibility for the behavioral health benefit that Magellan is currently administering. So Magellan is going away, and the Heritage Health plans are stepping in to provide that service, as well as the prescription drug or pharmacy benefits that the state is currently administering. So under Heritage Health, as a member, you'll choose one of these plans, and that plan will be responsible for contracting with providers, paying claims, and ensuring that members can access their medical, behavioral, and pharmacy benefits, and really bringing it together into a more integrated delivery system. And that starts on January 1st, 2017. Some of our goals with why we are making these changes or implementing the Heritage Health program, first and foremost, any time we're making changes, we look to try to improve the health outcomes of our recipients. And in Heritage Health, the way we're doing that is by creating a more integrated delivery system in which the medical, the behavioral, and the pharmacy benefits can be coordinated together. And that's really about putting the person at the center of care planning, about having their needs addressed in a more holistic fashion, recognizing that sometimes individuals' health or medical needs don't fit into the buckets that we've created and the way we administer our programs, and that we want our health plans to be able to take a more complete look at their needs, whether they be managing a chronic condition like diabetes, a behavioral health condition, what prescription drugs they may need to help treat and manage those conditions, and be able to have care planning that looks at all of that. And hopefully, by creating that system that's more integrated, more coordinated, we can reduce the rate of costly and avoidable care, like unnecessary emergency room visits or avoidable hospitalizations, to help create a system that's more financially sustainable for the state and for our taxpayers. To do that, the health plans take on some important responsibilities under their contracts with the state. First and foremost, they must administer the covered benefits and services that are prescribed by the Medicaid benefit package and for which the health plans are contracted to take on. So they've got to make sure they have providers in their network ready to provide those benefits. They've got to make sure they have policies and procedures in place to be able to authorize and pay for those services, and systems that can actually process those claims and ensure that their members can access those services and providers can get paid appropriately for them. They have to have programs to be able to provide care management for members, to be able to identify members that might have some special healthcare needs, co-occurring conditions, chronic health conditions that might be unmanaged, and offer them the opportunity to enroll in care management programs that can vary from some telephonic reaching out to help them schedule an appointment, find a provider, have a referral provided, all the way to maybe somebody, a nurse educator that's coming into the home to help that individual learn about a new diagnosis of diabetes and how they can better manage that and make some lifestyle and environmental changes to better manage that condition. And they've got to have those programs available. They've got to track their enrollees that they're enrolling into them, that are graduating from them, and report that to the state for our monitoring. They have to have quality management programs working in conjunction with each other and the state, and our providers across the state, to look for opportunities to have continuous quality improvement in the Medicaid program, conduct quality improvement or performance improvement projects at the direction or under the guidance of the state, our medical director, our quality committee, and be able to report on key quality metrics that are dictated in our contracts with them or that we want to incentivize financially for them to meet key targets. They need to be able to manage utilization of healthcare and ensure that healthcare that's being provided is appropriate and meets the coverage and medical necessity criteria set forth by the state to make sure that the costs of the program are in line with our expectations. They need to make sure they have a provider network in place to be able to have access for services to their members in the communities in which they live, based on the standards that the state sets. And they need to make sure that there's continuity of care as an individual transitions between a healthcare provider or a setting from the hospital to the home or to another level of care, that information is handed off, that there's care planning that's taking place, and that they're working with providers to ensure that nobody falls between the cracks. One of the important things to note with Heritage Health is that all three plans will offer the same package of benefits and services that are covered by Medicaid and for which they're contracted to administer. They cannot take anything away in terms of what is covered. They can't put in a restriction of a coverage or a benefit that's more strict from the state. They have to make -- what they can do is they can provide extra benefits and services that aren't traditionally covered by Medicaid. So they can provide for things that are outside of the Medicaid benefit package as a value-added service at no additional cost to the state. And those include things like could be wide-ranging from providing hypoallergenic bedding to a child, to a family with a child with asthma, to waiving some copays or coverage restrictions that the state imposes, to car seats for pregnant moms, for new moms when baby comes home. Some of those extra benefits and services are outlined in the plan comparison chart that you all received when you came in, and it's a way that they differentiate between themselves and help members choose which plan may be best for them and their families. There are some other Medicaid-covered services that certainly the member has access to but aren't part of the Heritage Health program, so they're being paid for or provided in a different way. For example, dental services for our members that have dental coverage, just like perhaps many folks that have a coverage to their employer, you have your medical health plan, and then you have a separate health plan for your dental services. It is going to operate similarly in Medicaid. Today, dental services are being administered directly by the state, and those claims are paid directly by the state. We're actually in the process of selecting a dental health plan to administer and manage dental services for all of our members statewide, and we expect to make that change next summer. But it won't be part of the Heritage Health plan's responsibility or changing on January 1st. Also, I mentioned earlier, the non-emergency transportation services, the help getting to and from doctor's appointments or the pharmacy. That's administered and coordinated through our transportation broker, who is currently in Tellaride. That's not changing as part of Heritage Health, although we are actively reviewing that program to look for opportunities to improve how it's administered and potentially in the future under the Heritage Health program, but no changes happening on January 1st. And then, as I mentioned earlier, all of the long-term care services. So the help in the home or in a facility for individuals who are elderly or have disabilities. And that would include our personal assistance services program or PAST program, where a worker's coming into the home to provide chore or direct care, any long-term care being provided in a facility like a nursing home, or any of our home and community-based waiver services that are administered through those waiver programs that folks can enroll in if they qualify. One of the big changes that is happening, of course, is the integration of the behavioral health benefit and the medical benefit together under Heritage Health. So that's today, the services that are being managed by Magellan. Magellan was going away after December 31st, and those services are being picked up by the Heritage Health plans. And that's, again, to really allow us to be able to better focus on the needs of the whole member, give the plans better tools to be able to invest in preventative and community-based behavioral health care. But we also recognize that this is a big change for our members and also for our providers. Many of our providers may only really be used to dealing with Magellan as a payer. And so to provide some extra help through this transition, we formed a Behavioral Health Integration Advisory Committee several months ago. They've been meeting very regularly to provide guidance and feedback to the state on ways that we can make sure that we address their concerns to this transition, looking at things like service definitions that will be used by the plans, the authorization criteria for behavioral health services, what Magellan was using, how the state wants to move forward, and make sure that there's clear guidance to providers as we move toward the January 1 transition date. What we don't want to do is have any interruption in care for folks as they transition to their Heritage Health plans. Similarly, the other major benefit change is the integration of the prescription drug or pharmacy services into Heritage Health. Today, those are being administered by the state and through our pharmacy benefit manager, but the plans are assuming responsibility for that on January 1st. However, we don't anticipate that this will be a big change from the member's perspective as we've required that the plans cover the same classes of drugs that are covered by Medicaid and follow the same preferred drug list that Medicaid uses. So there'll be the same PDL across plans and the same one that the state uses. They also have to accept any pharmacy into their network that's participating in Nebraska Medicaid today that's willing to sign up with them. So far, we've seen very robust participation by the pharmacies in the plans' networks. So again, we're not anticipating a major change from the member's perspective as this benefit transitions. And of course, we're working with our retail and community pharmacies to ready them for the change in terms of where those claims will have to be submitted and making sure that they're able to do that on January 1st, as soon as that member walks in with that And that is a lot of the effort that's underway right now, is readying the provider networks for this change to make sure members can access care. The plans are actively out working with providers to get contracts signed, get them in network, get them credentialed ahead of the January 1st date. One thing that is important to note, just like it works today, any provider that's contracting with a health plan to serve Medicaid members must also be enrolled as a Nebraska Medicaid provider, and that's through the MAXIMUS system. However, if you're enrolled as a provider today, you don't have to re-enroll as part of Heritage Health, but all of our providers must have an active enrollment with Nebraska Medicaid to serve our members, whether through fee-for-service or through a health plan. But the plans, as we prepare for this transition, we conduct our readiness reviews to make sure they're ready to change over services, must ensure that they have an adequate network of providers that are contracted and able to serve their members based across all types and subspecialties and specialties. They demonstrate that to us through GEO access reports, where they show us which providers are contracted, and we compare that to the standards that we set forth in their contracts. Now, of course, we know unfortunately our plans aren't able to create providers where they don't exist, and there are parts of our state where access challenges exist inherently, and we'll be working with our plans to look for strategies to address that. But our expectation is that where those providers do exist, that they're working to get them in network to make sure they meet those access standards. They also have a requirement to make sure that the providers they are contracting with include providers that have traditionally served the Medicaid population, to make sure that there's not an interruption in those provider-patient relationships. And again, that process is underway. If we -- I know we have some providers here in the room. Many of you are probably either in the process of working with plans or already contracted, or maybe you need -- you don't have that process started. So we do have contact information on our website. We did issue a provider bulletin earlier this year, Provider Bulletin 1614, that has contact information for each of the plans. We also have representatives from each of the plans here tonight that you can connect with and get a referral to their provider relations staff if there's questions or concerns regarding the contracting process. I'll quickly have each one raise their hand just so you can make eye contact. We have United Healthcare back there. We have WellCare back in that corner over there. And we have Nebraska Total Care right there. So kind of all on that back row, we've got the plans represented. If you need to make a connection with them tonight before you leave, they're here to do that. In addition to contracting providers, and many providers will be familiar with this process, will be credentialing with the plans. We do require that the plans accept if a provider chooses to participate in the CAQH credentialing portal. It's an opportunity that providers can use to upload their information through CAQH and authorize the plans to access it from that common data source. If you do use that or want to use that, you can access that information through caqh.org. You do need to make sure as a provider that your information is up to date, that it's been attested to in the last six months, and that you've authorized those specific health plans to be able to authorize, to be able to access that for purposes of credentialing. We also do require that the plans process and make decisions on credentialing applications within 30 days of receipt of a complete application to ensure that there's not undue delays in that process. And the plans are also required to allow you to begin the contract and credentialing process for new providers coming into Medicaid even while they're going through the enrollment process with MAXIMUS. So you don't have to wait until your enrollment's complete before you can begin the credentialing process. Your enrollment does have to be complete before it's finalized, but those can be done concurrently to cut down on any time it takes to come into the program. Of course, we get a lot of questions regarding the process for reimbursement to providers for healthcare. Generally, a provider will need to be contracted with a health plan to serve their member, and the terms of that reimbursement, that rate of reimbursement, will generally be negotiated as part of the contract between that plan and that provider. That's similar to how our managed care programs operate today. There are some exceptions to that. There are some services that either under state or federal rules are required to be reimbursed even if that provider is not in that plan's network, and that includes emergency services. So a member shouldn't need to worry about whether that hospital, when they visit the ER in an emergency, is in network or not. Family planning services, under federal regulations, members must have free access to the family planning provider of their choice, so those services must be reimbursed, or any Indian health services that are provided by an Indian health provider. There are also some provider types that, again, state or federal rules, have special reimbursement requirements or methodologies that we must use, including the plans. And that would include like our federally qualified health centers that are reimbursed at an encounter rate. That's a little bit different than the rate scheduled that we use for other providers. Or our critical access hospitals, which are many of our rural hospitals, are reimbursed through a certain per diem and a cost settlement process that is done as a true-up kind of at the end of the year, that the plans are required to participate in. So those providers generally know who they are and what those rules are, but there are always the exceptions to the rule, and so there are some exceptions to that rule. Again, we know a lot for providers. There's still a lot of work to be done between now and January, particularly given that we've got new plans entering the market, to ensure that folks are ready to bill and submit authorizations and use the claim portals that the plans have. So the plans all have requirements to be out doing provider training, doing provider sessions to help ready the provider community for those changes. They're going to be doing some of those together in the fall, where you'll be able to go to one place and have all the plans there to provide information. They'll be doing some of that individually with providers to help get them ready for this change. And at the end of the presentation, I'll show you the website where information about those dates and those opportunities will be posted. Some of the other things we're doing to improve the provider experience through Heritage Health, we formed an administrative simplification committee as part of the implementation of this program. That group has representatives across provider types, provider associations, the plans, to meet and really focus on opportunities to reduce administrative burdens, improve communications, and have more consistency between the plans. Certainly, it's going to be a continuous work of improvement, and it's going to continue on beyond implementation, but that group is going to be there to provide us with feedback and help provide a place to begin those conversations about where we can create those consistencies between the plans, and the state's going to be leading that process. Also, in their contracts, the plans have strict requirements around timely payment of claims to ensure that there's not delays in claims payment. We'll be monitoring that closely. They'll be reporting that data to us. They also have to provide providers with tools to be able to track the status of their claim and where it is in the processing and adjudication process. They need, they have to use the common preferred drug list to make things a little easier on prescribers, so they don't have to navigate multiple different PDLs. Again, they have to have provider training. They've got to have dedicated provider services staff on the ground in Nebraska to be able to go out and assist providers with billing or claim issues. They also each have to have their own provider advisory committee with Nebraska providers to be able to provide them with continuous feedback in terms of how operations are working, as well as a system to be able to intake any complaints or concerns from providers, track that to resolution, and report that to the state so that we can monitor that and watch for trends or concerns. Switching gears a little bit, I want to talk about some of the changes that are happening from the member's perspective through the Heritage Health process. One of the things that's very important to us as part of Heritage Health is that our members be engaged, and we improve the rate at which members are actively making a plan selection for themselves and their families. To do that, we are bringing in a new enrollment broker for Medicaid with Heritage Health. We've selected Automated Health Systems, or AHS, to be the state's new enrollment broker. And what is an enrollment broker? As the enrollment broker, AHS is responsible for providing both written and telephonic outreach to members to let them know about these changes and provide them with information about the opportunity they have to choose a plan. They provide choice counseling to be able to assist members in navigating these decisions and help them make the best decision of which plan is right for them in an objective way. They also have to provide multiple different means for the member to be able to choose their plan, and I'll go through those on the next slide. And also, by the way, I should note, of course, that this PowerPoint is available on our website, so you'll be able to access this after the meeting as well. They also have to have searchable provider directories where members can search and see which providers are contracted with which plans to be able to help inform their decision about which plan to choose. And then for members that ultimately don't make a plan selection, AHS is responsible for the process to assign them to a plan based on a methodology that the state has designed to try and preserve family and provider relationships that I'll explain in more detail on this slide. So nearly everyone enrolled So nearly everyone enrolled in Nebraska Medicaid, with a few exceptions that I'll highlight, will be receiving a packet in the mail, and will need to choose a health plan for coverage effective January 1st. And that's a little different than the way the managed care program operates today, where only about 82% of our enrollees are choosing a plan. Everyone that's going to be receiving that packet should have received a letter in the mail in July letting them know these changes were coming and that this packet and this information about choosing a plan was, would be coming. That those packets are being mailed out now. They'll begin hitting mailboxes this weekend and early next week. And we'll be doing this over several phases over the next few weeks. But that packet will include information on ways in which a member can choose their plan. They can do it online at neheritagehealth.com, which is the dedicated enrollment website. And it's a useful tool. And this is the first time our members will have the opportunity to enroll and choose their plan online. They'll also be able to call toll-free to the enrollment center with AHS staff there to answer questions and help them through the enrollment process. And it's open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They can also return the form that's included in their packet by mail indicating their plan selection. They can also fax that form back to AHS. So there's four different ways in which members can choose their plan. Members who, and members will have until December 1st to make that plan selection. Those that don't will be assigned to a plan by AHS using an algorithm that looks at whether or not they have any members of their household that have chosen a plan and will try to keep families together. They'll also look at which providers that member sees historically and primarily, and will attempt to assign them to a plan in which that provider or those providers are contracted. So the process will really seek to try to ensure that if, for whatever reason, someone doesn't make that plan selection, that the selection made for them doesn't disrupt their patient-provided relationships. Regardless of whether the member proactively chooses their plan or is assigned to a plan by the enrollment broker, everyone will have 90 days after January 1st to switch to a different plan if they change their mind or it doesn't work out for them. After that 90 days is up, members will generally be locked into their plan for the calendar year. And we'll have an annual open enrollment period in the fall where everyone will have the opportunity to either stay in their current plan or switch to a different one. There are opportunities, though, in some cases, in which we would allow a member to switch to a different plan outside of open enrollment. And they would need to make that request to AHS, and the state staff will review that and approve it in circumstances, for example, if the member's provider left their health plan's network or the member can't access a service for which they're entitled to through their health plan. In those situations, if we can validate that, we will grant that plan disenrollment. These are some examples of the materials that will be mailed out as part of the enrollment packet. All of these materials are available for download on our website, as well as the enrollment broker's website. It includes the member guidebook, which has frequently asked questions. It has information about the plan selection process. It's got member rights and responsibilities. So all that information to assist in the process. It also includes the plan comparison chart. You all should have received a copy of that on your way in today. And it details those extra benefits and services and differences between the plans to assist members in making that selection. It includes the welcome letter and the enrollment form if they want to mail back their plan selection. And then for our members who are choosing, who are new to choosing a health plan, and I'll talk about them in a moment. It'll also include a one-page fact sheet about why they're receiving, what they're receiving, and what they need to do with it, written in very simple language. So these materials, for the most part, are translated in both English and Spanish for members. And so that'll be available to them, and it's also available for download on the website. One of the things that's really important for members is that this transition, and many members will be moving to a new health plan, and everyone will be moving to a new health plan for behavioral health services, is that we make sure that there's continuity and no disruptions in care for them because of the administrative changes that are happening. To help facilitate that, we are working actively with the plans, both the current and the new, to ensure that there is a smooth handover. And part of that includes a process for which any authorizations for services that are ongoing or that are scheduled for January, that that information gets transferred over to the member's new plan, and it's honored by their new plan. And that there is a continuity of care period after January 1st, where those existing services continue to be honored with enough time where, you know, service authorizations can be renewed or re-reviewed by the new plan, and that the plan and the provider can work together on that. So we'll be detailing more, we'll be providing more details on what that process will look like as we get closer to January 1st. But we are actively working to try to automate that as much as possible to make it easier for both members and providers to move through that transition and make sure that there's no interruption in either the care being able to be provided or be reimbursed by the plans. As I mentioned, there are individuals that are choosing a plan for the first time under Heritage Health that are new to having their medical and pharmacy benefits administered by a health plan. And these include individuals who are participating in one of those home and community-based waiver programs. So the aged and disabled waiver, the traumatic brain injury waiver, or any of the developmental disability waivers. So members who enrolled in waivers today are excluded from managed care. Therefore, they don't choose a plan. They receive their services through fee-for-service. That's changing under Heritage Health. They will be enrolling in a plan. Also, individuals who live in a long-term care facility, like a nursing home, or people are home for people with developmental disabilities, also have been excluded before. Now will be choosing a health plan. There is not a provision to opt out. Nearly everyone in Nebraska Medicaid will be enrolling in a Heritage Health plan effective January 1st. And if individuals don't choose a plan, as I mentioned earlier, they will go through that auto-assignment process. But there is one important thing to note here and to provide that folks need, I hope, understand, is that while everyone, nearly everyone on Medicaid will be enrolling in a Heritage Health plan for their medical, pharmacy, and behavioral health services, the actual long-term care services that our members receive are not changing. They're not changing in the way they're paid for. They're not changing in the way they're provided, the way they're authorized, the way they're billed. None of that is changing. And that includes the personal assistance services program, those in-home supports, the facility-based care, anything that's being reimbursed to that nursing home or ICF as part of their daily rate or per diem, or any of the waiver services that are provided through the waiver program. But many of the folks that receive past services that live in a facility or that receive waiver services in the community also go to the doctor, also go to the pharmacy, also may have to be hospitalized from time to time, may need to see a mental health counselor. And those services will be administered through their Heritage Health plan and reimbursed through their Heritage Health plan. So that is important to note. The long-term care services aren't changing, but folks who receive them are enrolling in Heritage Health for their medical, behavioral, and pharmacy benefits. However, we do recognize that there needs to be improvements in the long-term care delivery system in Nebraska, that while these services aren't changing under Heritage Health, there are challenges with, for folks in terms of accessing long-term care and entering the long-term care system today. So we have launched concurrently a long-term care redesign initiative to take a comprehensive look at the long-term care delivery system in Nebraska and identify ways in which it can be improved. And so right now, we're really very much in the listening phase of this project. We're out across the state with some technical assistance folks that we brought on to bring together groups of enrollees, members, family members, caregivers, providers, to provide us with feedback on how the long-term care system is working, what's working well, what's not working well. Where do the barriers exist to getting services to help individuals live independently and in the community, which is our goal. So there's public meetings that are happening across the state, separate from these Heritage Health discussions, to gather that feedback as part of the redesign initiative. We'll be taking that in along with our staff and the folks we're working with to put together some initial recommendations for ways that we can revamp or improve the long-term care system. And we'll be publishing those out for comment in the spring. And we'll be doing another round of feedback with members and stakeholders and providers about those, those plans and those potential recommendations before those get finalized and we develop what our long-term plan looks like for improving the long-term care system here. So we've still got a lot of work to do, still probably a few years out from any major changes taking place. But if you're interested in participating in that process, we do have a website set up for the redesign initiative. It's dhhs-ne.gov/LTC, Long-Term Care LTC. Or you can email us at dhhs.ltcredesign@nebraska.gov. And we've got, again, a schedule of events that are happening. I believe tomorrow night, there is a live webinar being broadcast out over the NET, Nebraska Educational Television website, for folks to participate in. Really, again, we're really just in the listening phase of the redesign project now. But coming back to Heritage Health, we are, as I mentioned, looking in multiple different ways to engage with providers and members and stakeholders about these changes and make sure folks know what's going on and that we're hearing from them about their concerns or ideas. And so I mentioned two of these groups already that have been meeting to provide us with a more formal mechanism of feedback. The Administrative Simplification Committee, that's focused really on the provider experience. The Behavioral Health Integration Committee, that's helping guide the process from both a member and provider perspective in terms of the changes in behavioral health services. And also, what I didn't mention yet is the Quality Management Committee, which is new. We've actually got our, the next meeting of the committee happening tomorrow, I believe. And this is a group that is really forming together now to be able to provide a layer of oversight to the program, to provide feedback on the quality of services that are being provided in Medicaid and through the Heritage Health program, giving us feedback in terms of what metrics we should be targeting, which projects we should be undertaking in terms of performance improvement, and what some of those objectives need to be in terms of quality improvement in the program. So we've got a broad array of providers, of stakeholders, of public health folks, of quality experts that are, that sit on that group to provide the state with some, some feedback and recommendations. And it's sort of, and it's very much focused on the clinical and quality improvement of the program. We, we have a lot of resources available about the changes that are happening. We've really been trying to put a lot of those out there to help folks and assist them through this process. But we have a really good website dedicated to Heritage Health. It's dhhs-ne.gov/HeritageHealth. And if you go there and you click on the box that says "resources", there really are a lot of resources there. For example, all the presentations we've been given, this PowerPoint's posted there. The film of tonight's meeting will be posted there, along with videos from other provider webinars that we've conducted are posted there. We've got a frequently asked questions document for both members and providers that's being updated. We'll be taking feedback from the state tour of questions we got and updating that based on the questions that we received. Fact sheets, the enrollment materials that are being mailed out to members are posted there. The copies of our contracts with the health plans, they're about 1,000 pages long. But if you're interested in reading them, they're posted there as well. And you can also subscribe to the webpage by clicking on Subscribe to This Webpage, where you'll get an email notification anytime we update or post something new so you can stay abreast of the very latest information. If you don't find the answer to your question there or have an idea or concern, you can also feel free to email us at dhhs.heritagehealth@nebraska.gov. That box is being monitored by our staff, and we'll fielding those questions and getting them to the right place or trying to point folks to the right resources. So that's also a good way to get info back from us if you need a little additional assistance. So with that, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions. And I'll have folks from our team jump in if I can't answer the question. But we'll start off right here.
Do we have to sign up, because we're signing up for the three insurance companies? I have a counseling business. Do we also have to sign up with Heritage Health somehow? How do I get confirmation about that?
Heritage Health is, so the question is, for the folks that might be watching the video later on, as a provider, you're maybe signing up with the health plans. Do you also have to sign up with Heritage Health? Heritage Health is the name of the program. Within Heritage Health, there are three health plans. There's no company that's Heritage Health. It's really just a brand. So you don't have to worry about that. Yes, sir.
You mentioned those three committees about administrative behavioral health and the quality. Is, are outside people, outside of Heritage Health invited onto that, those organizations? If so, how do I get involved with that? Or if not, how do I contact somebody with my comments, questions, concerns?
Great question, and I should have mentioned that. So actually, if you go to this website, you'll see a page that says Heritage Health Committees. And they're all public meetings. They're all open to the public. And we also post the agendas there, all the materials that get presented, the slides, the minutes from after the meetings. I believe the membership rosters are posted there as well. And there's also portals for each committee to send in comments or questions. And certainly, they're, they're public meetings, and they're posted on the public meeting calendar. So anyone's welcome to attend. I believe there's also generally a call-in number available. So there, it's absolutely open to participation. Yes, sir.
If there's a group that's signed up, and I'm an individual provider, do I also need to be credentialed under each of the plans or something under each of the plans?
Generally, yes. So as a provider, you'll need to be credentialed with the plans that you contract with. That's a requirement of their...
Individually, if you remember, work with them?
Oh, as a group. So that, so that will depend a little bit upon the way your group is set up and how you're credentialed with the plans, and whether or not your group may have delegated credentialing authority from the plans. So I would have you direct those questions back to the individual plans because it may vary in terms of how you're set up. Yes, sir.
I was able to find all of our providers, including Children's Home Healthcare, but I couldn't find Children's Hospital. Does that mean they're not part of the plan?
Good question. So the providers are still actively contracting, and the plans are still actively contracting. So the provider directory that's up on the website, the enrollment broker website today, is being updated daily. So specifically to children, I know that they're in contract negotiations with each of the plans right now, and that's underway. So I would, I would urge you to check back frequently. We expect that more and more providers will get loaded into the system and show us and network with the providers as we progress closer. And we'll be monitoring that very closely. Yes, sir.
If a provider, if we get a new provider that enrolls after October 1st, will the three plans cover the, the items from October 1st through December 31st? Because Magellan is no longer accepting new credentialing after September 30th?
So Magellan is stopping credentialing of new providers coming in effective October 1st because in most cases, that provider won't have completed credentialing by the time services transition over January 1st. However, groups are still able to update their rosters. So if they have a new employee come into their group to provide services, and they're credentialed with Magellan currently, they can still update their roster through Magellan to be able to provide services. So, but am I saying that correctly, Heather? Yeah. So, so we don't anticipate there to be access issues for folks in terms of services before the end of the year. And then effective January, for dates of service, January 1st and 1, the new plans will be responsible for that.
So if a provisional provider that has never been on Magellan before comes to work for my company between October 1st and December 31st, they're not able to see clients until after January 1st?
Is that a situation which they can update the... It would depend on the, so it would depend on the type of provider specifically, if it's for, as a provisional and their supervision. So I would want to maybe take, go offline and look at your situation specifically and get Magellan, because they're not here, to help answer that question. So, because I know we have been working with them on this and making sure that they have a process in place in which providers can still update rosters and still get paid.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as Medicare/Medicaid people, do they, on the pharmacy side, do they have to still continue to get the Medicare Part D card? Or will this replace them having a separate prescription card?
Great question. So the question is around individuals who are eligible for Medicaid and Medicare, and whether they need to still sign up for Part D for their drug benefits under Medicare. This is actually a question that has come up a few times while we're out. So we're in the process of putting together some updated FAQs and fact sheets specifically to Medicare/Medicaid enrollees around some of the issues that are specific to Medicare enrollees. The answer is yes. They'll still need to choose a Part D plan, and nothing about the process of choosing a Part D plan will be changing. Medicaid is still secondary to Medicare as a payer. So meaning Medicare has to pay first, whether it's Medicare fee-for-service or the Medicare Part D plan. And then Medicaid is secondary, whether it's Medicaid fee-for-service or the Medicaid health plan. All of the health plans have to have coordination of benefit agreements in place to be able to process those Medicare crossover claims and pay that Medicare copay or whatever Medicare doesn't pay in those situations, just like Medicaid is doing today. Yes, sir.
Optum, which is the credentialing provider for UHC, is requiring board directors' social security numbers and other personal information, like addresses and whatnot. And we're trying to figure out if that's something new with Heritage Health? Or is that something, because no other insurance company has asked for this such strength, or such information from us in previous...
Thank you for, I'm not aware of that specific situation. I'd have you connect with Kim with UHC on that issue, and we'll certainly can circle back as well. I know in some cases, we need that information for Medicaid enrollment for, under the new federal screening enrollment requirements for individuals that are on board to have certain ownership stakes in provider organizations. And I don't know if it's similar to that or not, but...
We require, we require the health plans through, for credentialing.
For credentialing purposes to have that. So it may be something that we're requiring as well. So I'll follow up on that. And that, well, we're requiring through virtue of new federal screening requirements. But I don't know why you'd be seeing it in one plan, not the other. So I want to follow up on that. up on that. Any other questions? You're quiet. I know you'll wake up tonight and think, oh, that's a question I wish I asked. Well, if you do, please do visit the website, please do send us an email and let us know of any questions that you have. Plans will be back out, we'll be posting resources there about some of the provider seminars that will be taking place, that'll focus more on some of the technical billing issues, and we'll make sure to sign up so you can get alerts on those. Oh, yes, another question.
Do you want to just, the MAX, MAXUS?
MAXIMUS.
Do you need a friend with them?
So you're, if you're, are you seeing Medicaid patients today? Then you're already enrolled as a Medicaid provider, then you're already enrolled in MAXIMUS, you don't have to do it again until your re-validation comes due, which is based on when you enrolled in every, up to every five years, depending on what type of provider you are, but you'll get a notice from them when it's time to do that.
Oh, no, I didn't sign up with them because I'm already a Medicaid provider.
Now, if you are an enrolled Medicaid provider, as of March 2011, I don't know if you were or not, but if you were, everyone that was enrolled in must be revalidated by November, and you should have received a revalidation notice to that regard. And we're about to do another provider bulletin out on this to remind folks that you need to be revalidated by November, because we're about halfway through in terms of our providers that have actually come in and revalidated.
Are you going to be crediting them?
MAXIMUS will send those notices, or has sent those notices, sometimes, but sometimes providers will have the most current addresses and contact information, so go and look at the provider bulletins on revalidation. We have another one, reminder one, coming out soon, but if you go look at the provider bulletins, there's one back, I think from earlier this year, it might have been late last year, on revalidation, explains the process.
What's on DHHS?
Of the Medicaid, Medicaid long-term care provider bulletins. Yes, ma'am?
Do you know if the three programs are going to keep a roster like Magellan did of therapists that are trained in evidence-based practices like child parent psychotherapy or child interaction?
Yeah. I don't, I, I know that obviously that's some information that gets collected potentially in the credentialing process. I'm not familiar with the way Magellan captures and presents that information, so would want to take that offline and, and connect on that, so Heather can be the follow-up point person there. Oh, yes, sir. I knew y'all weren't done.
If we, if a person is, a provider is signed up with MAXIMUS, are they automatically credentialed with all three programs, or do they still, if the, as long as the clinic is, is with each, all three programs?
No, they're not, because it's not quite the same process. What MAXIMUS is looking for in enrolling providers is making sure they're not on any of the excluded provider lists with Medicare or other states, that they actually are there and exist, whereas the credentialing is looking more at qualifications and licensure for that plan. Now, that's why we are requiring that they do the CAQH process to try to make that easier. We know that doesn't work for everybody, and part of what we want the Administrative Simplification Committee to do is continue to look at ways to streamline credentialing, but the plans are also required by virtue of their own accreditation to ensure that they have credentialed providers in their network. So you do have to credential with the plans that you contract with, which is a separate process from enrollment. Anymore? Yes?
Will there be changes to the preferred drug list in January?
Well, there will be, but not because of Heritage Health, in the sense of every six months, and the question is, will there be changes to the preferred drug list on January 1st? Every six months, our P and T committee meets and reviews half of the classes of drugs and makes recommendations for changes to the PDL, and that happens to implement July 1st and January 1st generally, so that, but it'll just be the same process we normally go through in terms of PDL changes. All right, well, thank you all very much for, oh, yes, ma'am?
Well, my question is about questions.
Yes.
If we send in questions, will you send us a response, or, or it's been referred to or something, so we can keep in mutual contact?
Absolutely, that's why we have this email address here, we will respond. In some cases, we may refer you to, oh, we have this FAQ already that answers your question, and here it is. Some question, hey, that's a great question, we don't know the answer right now, but let us take that back. But our staff are monitoring and responding to emails on that email address page, so absolutely.
And your three committees, do you have public members on them?
We do, we do have several consumer and members, particularly on, on the, on the different committees that we have, I believe, and they're all public meetings, and all the members are posted publicly, and anyone can come attend the meetings, and they're posted on the public meeting calendar.
So we can get information, or these have just started?
In the last few months, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. This website here, or the state public meeting website, it gets posted to with, with the committees and their schedules out through the next several months, you can plan out if you want to come or call into one, those dates are available publicly.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else think of another question? All right, well, thank you all for being here this evening, appreciate seeing you all, have a wonderful evening.[1797.94][1797.94]